Well, I guess 3:00 is final. Lieutenant David Ratcliffe, he wants to purchase some equipment from the Stone Garden farm. Today, we have one member missing by Barker's home ill. Clyde, are you there?
No, he's not.
He's not there?
Okay.
Okay? Okay, now would you step to the mic or grab that one or something, Dave? So we will hear you.
Come stand up, please, and I'll sort of... That's not on the phone, just have to yell at them.
Oh, with the speaker up there?
Yeah, yeah, the phone thing.
Yeah.
The mics aren't on here.
This one isn't?
Yeah, they asked.
Yep, they are.
Love it.
You hear that?
Sorry.
All right, just got to show a few.
Well, thanks for that. All right. Ready?
Ready.
So every year, we participate in Operation Stone Garden, which is a federal program at the conjunction with Water Patrol. Typically, we give them $100,000 to $150,000 a year for overtime paid for patrols as well as purchase of equipment. In the current funding year, we were awarded $12,013 to buy some FLIR, handheld FLIR units, thermal imagers for the patrol guys to have in their vehicles so that if they go to a car crash and somebody gets ejected from the vehicle, we can find them if they run out from into the woods, we can find them if we've lost people, we can find them. So I just need your permission, because it's over $5,000, to spend that money, which will be fully reimbursed by the Stone Garden fund.
Clyde, are you there?
I'm here, Terry.
Okay, thank you. Hey, did you hear David Ratcliffe? He wants to...
I heard the last of it, yep.
Okay, all right. Okay, comments, Lance, on that? Any comments, Clyde?
The what, Terry?
Do you have any comments on what David is asking?
No, I don't.
Okay.
It's the money.
Okay. So I guess I need a motion that would allow Mr. Ratcliffe to send Stone Garden over. He can spend Stone Garden. I second that? Any further...
Yes, I say.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Terry?
Aye.
Lance?
Aye.
Clyde?
Yes.
Unanimous, 3-0, thank you.
Thank you, Dylan.
All right, you do it.
John Welch should be on the line.
Oh, he's on the phone?
Yes.
Yeah.
John, is that you?
Yes.
John, go right ahead, you have the floor.
I'm here.
Go ahead.
Yes, um, I'm looking, I'm the custodian up at the jail and also the New Sharon Fire Chief. You know, so up here at the jail, there's a compressor that's been up here for a number of years and they don't use it anymore. It used to be for the old heating system. It's just sitting there, not being used. And New Sharon Fire has built a new fire station, and I was wondering if you could donate that to the fire station.
Does it have a value?
Um, I'm not sure what they paid for it brand-new. I'm not really sure. I'm hoping the county...
I did check with Doug and the sheriff, and they both say they have absolutely no use for the equipment, so they are fine with the donation.
My thing, my question was, if it had a value, why wouldn't we offer it out to other fire departments and take the highest bid or something? I just want to be...
I understand.
I just want to be crystal clear on things that we're donating and make sure that we're doing the right thing.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I'm not sure who else would be interested in it. You know, there's going to be some cost involved with having it moved and having it set up at our station.
But you answered my question. I was wondering why you would just ask me, "I'm going to donate it to New Sharon Fire Department," but you answered my question now because you're the fire chief there, so I understand your interest. Lance, any comments? No. Clyde? Clyde, are you there?
He's there.
He is there.
Clyde, do you have any comments? All right. Then I'll weigh a motion. All right? Oh, yeah. Let's play it for you. They give you a name on the page, on the minutes. I saw that issues giving things away, there's just one group and nobody else knows about it. Clyde?
Yes.
Oh, you there? Clyde, do you want to weigh in on this subject? I can't hear you, Clyde.
More.
They might have just lost power, I don't know. Yeah?
Is it still on?
Yeah.
What do you still think the value of that is?
I think that he didn't give it...
Oh, no, no, no.
I don't know what size it is, I don't know. Maybe it can't be too much. Try now.
Are we talking like just...
Is it worth it?
Yeah, of course, it can't be that much.
Clyde?
I don't know.
Clyde, are you there?
He is now.
I'm here, but they ain't working right today. I don't know why.
Well, I can hear you fine now. Do you, do you...
Okay, let's try.
Do you hear what...
What it is?
Do you hear what John Welch wants?
No, I didn't hear it.
He's the custodian at the jail?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And he wants, there's an old compressor up there, and he wants to give it to the town of New Sharon because he's the fire chief there.
Okay.
So I asked what the value of it is, and he doesn't know that. So, all right, so I'm waiting, a motion.
Ask John if he knows how it's big.
Okay, well, could we just say this? Is it, John, is it expedient that we do this right now?
Excuse me? Could you say that again?
Is it expedient that we do, so you don't know the value of this? I mean, how big is this?
Um, no, I, I looked at some of the compressors online that's the same type, but it's, you know, new.
Okay, well, how much are they new at? How much are they new then, John?
New, they're around $5,000 right now. This is a Quincy compressor. Um, I'm not sure how much the jail paid for it when they installed it, um...
How long has it been since it's been in use, John? How long for you, how long has it just been sitting idle?
I really don't know when it was put in. A number of years ago, like, I'm going to say 12 or 15 years ago.
Can't be a lot of value.
Well, I don't know if it's any good or if it's functioning. It might be worth half the value, unless I'm getting it wrong. Could we, could we table this item and have someone check out the value?
Sure.
Uh, I second that one, no, a little bit of that. Okay. Clyde, you on board with that?
Yeah, I didn't get all of the hint away, and I don't understand what's going on, so...
Yeah, well, we'll table it until the next meeting.
If it's all right, we'll ta...
And who would you prefer to take a look at it to give it a price on it?
We have a man in house only, Nick. Could we have Nick, okay?
We can get a value on it, yes.
Sure.
Yep.
I would, I would make the motion if we have Nick Harmon take a look at it, just put a value on it.
Okay.
I'll second that motion. Second motion. All those in favor of the motion?
Uh, Terry?
Aye.
Lance?
Aye.
Clyde?
Yes.
Thank you. Unanimous, 3-0.
All right.
Table until March 16th.
Okay, and I see that we've got to go with two executive sessions. We'll do that at the end. We'll move to new business and the clerk's report.
Uh, you have the February subcommittee and February 23 minutes approval.
I make the motion, you sign those. Seconded. All those in favor?
Yes, Terry?
Aye.
Lance?
Aye.
Clyde?
Yes.
Unanimous, 3-0.
We'll move to the treasurer's report.
Uh, the treasurer's report, you have one payroll, one TIF warrant, one UT warrant, and two county warrants for approval.
Make the motion, we sign those tomorrow. Seconded. All in favor of that motion?
Terry?
Aye.
Lance?
Aye.
Clyde?
Yes.
Can I? Yes. This isn't going to be a sign of a super technical question, but should we be signing those before we make the motion? Every, every organ, occasion, I've been...
No, no, I just think it could be that something comes up and you go, "Ooh."
Yeah, we sign, yes.
And we, and we have redone the warrant in order to something if they take off...
No, no, I just, I was just wondering if I'm not supposed to...
But that's a good question, but we have redone them if something disagrees.
Okay, as long as we can redo them.
Yep, we certainly can.
Yeah.
And also, I want to let you know that we received the fiscal year '20 draft audit, and I have reviewed it. I finished yesterday, and I sent some correspondence back to the auditors for questions on certain matters.
Are we going to hear a copy of that, or is that...
You want a copy of the draft, or...
No, not what you said, but what they said.
Oh, sure, yes.
Here.
Yep, you can do that.
Thank you. I want to see if they're picking apart anything.
Okay.
Thank you. Item number three, TIF Ed Scholarship Recommendation. Uh, Danny Ma.
Yes, we did award him a scholarship in the amount of $2,750 in the fall for the fall semester at Kennebec, Kennebec Valley Community College, and he is studying to be a lineman, electrical. And for some reason, he did not request the same amount for the spring semester, which he is now requesting, but we did receive a copy of his trans, transcript. He is doing extremely well, he's in great standing, and ran this by the TIF committee, and they strongly recommending approving, funding him in $2,750 for the spring semester.
What's in the GPA?
I can be asked here to get it. I believe it was close to 40, it was like 3.7, 3.8, yeah.
How many people do we, do we, scholarships do we have coming out of?
Quite a few. I can give you a historical rundown.
Oh, just, yeah.
But normally, anywhere from two to four individuals per semester. We've been doing pretty well the last couple of years. And this has been, this is a very small one. We have capped the total payments to the students at $50,000 for the life. And we do have, two individuals now have reached that cap.
Now, what are, what are the requirements for getting...
I can give you a copy of the application and the guidance. Yep, absolutely, yep.
All right, I'll go first.
And it's, and it's on Greater Franklin Development web page as well.
Okay. Which is general?
UT, and I believe he's either Freeman or Salem, but don't go near them. But she definitely, he has to be resident of the UT.
Yeah. I move that we give him $2,750 for spring. Your second tack? Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion?
Terry?
Yes?
Lance?
Yeah.
Clyde?
Yes.
Unanimous, 3-0, thank you.
Okay. Item number four is the detention center RFPs.
Yes, so we currently have three contracts that will be expiring in June at the detention center. The sheriff is recommending we go out for RFP, which you see a draft up in front of you for the pre-trial and the mental health counseling. And I have a draft of those there, and they are the same RFP we have used the last two years, I do believe, if not. Yep, they all look like these.
I got this one, let me see. Do you have another one, Eric?
He has one of these.
He doesn't have that. That's what we had, a little bit of discussion on those.
These are my copies, we can certainly use them, I can look like them.
All right, thank you.
So the deadline, I believe I put on those was the end of April, off the top of my head, and they did, so that will give us plenty of time to review any RFPs that come in and act on them before they expire in June.
Yes, April 30th.
April 30th, I was correct.
So this, there's only two, right?
Two RFPs, and I want to talk about the medical after this one.
What does RFP mean?
Request for proposal.
So basically, if I understand this correctly, and why not, then we're going to be sent, so their contract ended on June 1st?
No, June 30th.
June 30th?
Yep.
So this is to send out proposals for bids?
This is to send notice out, we will advertise.
To anybody that may have been on April.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
And the criteria, right? And the criteria is listed, yeah?
That is correct, so we'll, we'll post it and advertise those.
Okay.
So are you okay with the process starting for those? I guess I'm just looking for a go-ahead with those specs that we've used previously.
Do we have to make a motion on that?
I, I think we should just...
I make a motion that we send them out. I'll second that. Clyde?
Yep.
Okay. All in favor of that motion?
Terry?
Aye.
Lance?
Yeah.
Clyde?
Yes.
Unanimous, 3-0, I'll get those out. And the other contract that is going to be expiring is the medical contract with MedPro. And speaking with the sheriff and Doug for the past several years, they have, MedPro has been the only entity that has submitted a proposal that has been considered, and they also, in their contract, gave an option to renew for a one-year period at 3% increase, and then a second year if you wanted at another 3%. I think the sheriff probably would be satisfied, after speaking with him today, to just renew that contract for a one-year period with a 3% increase.
Who's, put that again?
It's for medical services at the jail, and the company is MedPro.
MedPro?
Yes. And they've been, they've been satisfied with the services provided.
The service?
Yes.
So I make a motion that we continue with an extension with 3% increase?
For the upcoming year, yes.
Sorry. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor of that motion?
Terry?
Aye.
Lance?
Aye.
And Clyde?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. Um, so the MedPro requires a letter to be sent. I don't know, I'd have to look at the contract to see if it's the sheriff that needs to send the letter, or the commissioners just notifying them of our intent to renew, so we will do that.
All right. Item number five would be FY '22 budget calendar?
Yes, so before you, you should see what I have put together for the budget process for the upcoming year, for the county budget. Uh, we're going to make this room available for the budget committee to caucus on April 5th, which is a Monday.
It's a Friday.
And then April 2nd, budget requests from departments are due to me, and then on your regular commissioners' meeting on Tuesday, April 20th, we will start the commissioners' budget review, and we'll see if we can get it done in one evening. If not, we will reschedule for a second day.
Okay.
And letters have gone out to the municipalities, letting them know that the caucus will be April 5th.
So when you send the extra day, do you, are you talking about the 2nd, or if we couldn't get it all done on the 5th?
On April 20th, your review.
Oh, review, okay, I see.
Yeah.
Roughly how long do those, is it all over the place, or how long are meetings like that last?
It is.
I assume a lot of people...
Since we, since we're no longer funding a lot of the program grants, usually, I think last year, we got through the whole county budget in, like, what, four or five hours? So we might be able to do it in one evening, if you want to push it.
That's the review one, right?
That is correct.
No, I'm talking about the, like, the, the car.
The caucus does not involve the commissioners, you don't have to attend that.
Oh, okay.
That's just for the municipal commissioners and officers to fill the vacancies.
Okay, gotcha.
Yep.
And then on the 20th, what time is that?
We'll start at, we'll have a regular commissioners' meeting at 3:00.
Okay.
And I usually try to keep that agenda very short, and then we go right into the budget review.
Okay. Okay.
And the other question, just regarding the budget process, is, of course, we're going to have to do a calculation for salary and wages, and we always have the discussion on, do you want each department head to address that individually, or do you want the department heads to meet amongst themselves and come in with a unified cost of living adjustment that they'd like to see for the employees? And speaking with the department heads, at least at the courthouse this year, they would like to have everybody be on the same page and come in with the same cost of living adjustment for most of the employees.
Amazing.
So...
We're going to make a couple of comments here, you're going to make one about the funds coming in in the future. The, uh, the TIF.
Yeah, the mistletoe is.
And time is there. Need to pay attention to that, that's going to be a real big hit for the county.
But we'll try to present in the county budget what you'll see will be, hopefully, a unified approach from all departments, so, okay?
All right.
Great, that's all needed on that.
As long as we have a tally, who votes a lot? You know, at the end, if they come up with a unified number, some people might vote for 3, some people would push 4, that kind of thing.
Okay.
And I want to see who did that, so that we can converse, because I'm, I'm really afraid of what the future holds with Franklin County. Okay? So all business, signing of agreements, hearing decision.
I have drafted a decision, and it is still with our attorney pending her review, so we will table that until the next meeting.
Okay, there we go.
I have some miscellaneous when we...
Okay. Miscellaneous, if there's nothing on their all business from anyone? Yes? Mike?
I don't, I don't want to be all the miscellaneous, but I like to be something.
Well, as soon as Julie finishes with miscellaneous, we'll go with you, executive session? Or do you want this, you want to speak about something?
I like to speak about something that probably ought to go on record.
All right, that's fine.
Can I go first?
Absolutely. No, hold on.
Hey, go ahead, Julie.
Um, so today, I sent out the notice that we are opening up for application for letters of intent for the next round of the TIF funding, so that process is well underway. In regards to that, I received a phone call this afternoon, right before the commissioners' meeting, from the state, indicating to me that Helix, who is the owner of the Kibbe Wind Tower project, they had filed for an abatement, which I was aware of, for their taxes that is being assessed by the state. They were successful in that abatement application, and therefore, we will be receiving the letter from the state notifying us that we are going to have to repay to the state of Maine. I left my number downstairs, but it's to the amount of $469,000, I believe, if it is what I said. It's all 469?
I think so, I can sort of see.
Yes, so we, we will be getting formal notification from the state in the upcoming week. How that impacts on what we have paid to Helix needs to be determined if we need a refund. It's a lot of moving parts, because this is the first time they've issued such an abatement in such a large amount for the Wind Tower project. And what I understand is it's not only our project, it's other projects that were approved around that timeframe. The state was using an inappropriate way to reach the valuation, so it's not only us that's going to be impacted, there's going to be other counties as well, own communities.
Is that, was that, so that goes back to the original proposal? Or is that, like, retroactively figured out everything that was...
I believe that, and I'm not a tax expert, but I believe it's only one or two year, locally, you can go back. I don't know how far back they can look. I don't think it's from the inception, but I don't know that.
Totally.
How, if...
Yeah, I don't know what timeframe they look at, yeah.
Does anybody know how that would affect what we receive going forward on base of that evaluation?
Yes, if, and they're going to give us an indication of what they think our future payments will look like.
You mean, okay.
So we've been averaging right around $1,000,001,3, and in that letter, I believe they're going to address what our expectation could be going forward based on the new valuation that they've arrived at, so... This was just the initial conversation I had with the state today, just to let us know.
Doesn't that make you a little suspicious due to the fact that the state's in trouble in their budget? Now all of a sudden, they come up with, "We made an error."
Uh, but I, I mean, it was not the state that started the process. I mean, this was, this was, you know, initiated by the Wind Power, the Wind Tower companies.
They basically were trying to say, "You processed this wrong."
That is exactly what they're doing, yep.
That's just, you know, being kind of... Okay? Is that it?
I think so. Uh, one other thing.
Okay.
Um, and if everything keeps going the way that it has been with lower numbers with COVID cases, and hopefully, a lot more of our employees and the public in general getting the vaccine, I would anticipate that we would probably like to reopen to the public on and before April 5th. That will allow the budget caucus to happen upstairs here, because obviously, we still have the social distance, and meet all the requirements for the amount of people we can have in the courtroom.
Is that, excuse me, is that caucus going to be on this room?
Yes.
Okay.
That's how I set it up, that way they can social distance or break out into the other rooms up here, so... It's a lot better than downstairs in the commissioners' office.
Sure.
So that, I think that's what we're shooting for, is the 1st of April to reopen. And then, I'll let Mike go, but I think we might have a common item to talk about. Go ahead.
Come right up here, Mike, so you can grab a phone or a microphone, so people can...
I've had COVID, so you don't have to worry, I don't carry it anymore.
Okay.
I've tested negative 22 times.
That's good.
I would like to talk to you guys about cemeteries. This cemetery business, as near as I can understand, is a cemetery in West Freeman, Freeman, North Freeman, Freeman Ridge, Madrid, and Salem. Salem and Freeman Ridge is covered by the association, the association does. The county budget, $6,000 for West Freeman, Freeman, North Freeman, and Madrid.
Is that the least one?
That's total. That's what the budget is for all four of them, $6,000 to you.
Right, that's total.
What, what I'd like to know is, how often do you want them mowed? And I want to put them out for bid. I don't want to be standing there with a lawnmower, looking for a guy to run a lawnmower. I'm not in that business, and I don't care to be in that business. I would like to put it out for bid, and I'd like to have some kind of direction from you guys. And, and West Freeman, I'm not really sure if the county mows that, there's been a lot of talk that Del Reid mows it, and, and I don't know, I haven't seen anyone... and, and I don't know, I haven't seen anywhere repay him anything, I don't know if he just mows it because he mows it, or what, but.
That's right, Mike, that's what Dell did. I understood he just done it for, for himself, I mean, for something to do, I guess.
So, we're paying six thousand dollars for that?
Six thousand dollars in the budget. The last, the last, uh, highway supervisor, uh, had his own crew and his own lawnmowers, and he took care of it. And we're not doing that anymore, we're not, you know, I'm not running any of my equipment, so I don't care to purchase lawnmowers or any of that stuff, uh, and do that. And I really don't wanna search out every time it needs to be mowed, you know, some guy to mow it, I, I really don't wanna do that, I'd like to put it up for bid. I, I would strongly suggest we mow it at least every other week, you know, and, and, and put it up for bid and see what comes in it.
I agree. I think that's the most economical way to do it, Mike, I agree.
I know sometimes we're only mowing a couple of times a year, depending on the years.
Depends on the weather.
But also depends on, some of them are mossed, some are grassy. Yep. Some of them are tree. I like your idea, so.
I just like, I'd like to put it out there, if you guys willing, you can write up something for, for a bid process. I can come in and step with you and get something together.
Yep.
Because the sooner the better, you know, because of the spring time.
People will start, get interested.
Good, I don't know if we put this out for bid. I'll second that. Any further discussion? Thank you, all those in favor? Something to motion?
Uh, Terry.
Yes.
Lance.
Good.
Clyde.
Yes.
Thank you. Unanimous, three zero.
The last thing I've got is just something simple, I give it to you guys, it's a projection on what I'd like to spend for the rest of the twenty twenty-one budget. Uh, right now, I got roughly ninety thousand dollars in that budget. You can see the, the projected costs of each one of these projects, on what I do on each road. What you can't see, it isn't in there, is that I'd like to order ten thousand dollars worth of culverts through a COVID company, instead of piecemeal in the mall, the way we have it, and I'd like to go direct, eliminate the middleman. And then, so that would be ten thousand, it'll allow me eighty-two hundred dollars for, for the spring rock raking and grading, and it would allow me twenty-five hundred dollars for, we'll say, our share of twenty twenty-one's mowing of the cemetery.
How much do you think you'd save by ordering ten thousand dollars, rather than paying eight hundred or whatever?
I would project that we could save at least fifteen to twenty percent.
That's a good dollar.
So that's gonna have to be a bid.
That's a good.
Well, as long as I keep it under ten, I don't feel like.
We've always been, in the past, we had always, not most recently, but we had always bid culverts and done the formal, and we'd had great success with it.
Okay.
In years past.
Okay.
I mean, we've got time to do it right now, because you're not gonna need them.
Yeah, I just wanna, you know, because of the way the year falls, you know, I've got, I've got part of May, a little part of May in June, in order to take care of the rest of my budget, right? Because what happens to the rest of my budget?
So what we can do, where, where a lot of things were not accomplished last year, I think it would be appropriate, Vicki, weigh in on this, is where we were kind of not having a real road agent on board for most of the season. I think it would be appropriate, anything unexpended, we could carry forward, Mike.
Okay.
And that would give you the remainder of this summer to expend it, right? Like we do with any other line item. For reasons that we couldn't foresee, we didn't get these things accomplished this year, so we can carry those monies forward into the new fiscal year. And that will give you until, say, October, to get those monies expended and work on your current budget.
My current budget.
Yep.
I mean, that's what I was looking at, it's like, okay, you got ninety thousand dollars, I already, these are the priorities even without the ninety thousand, but.
That should give you plenty of funding to get done what we need to get done, if we carry that.
Well, this is, this is the first, like, I got three mows. Don't worry, there won't be any money when I'm done.
But I mean, I, I guess I wouldn't worry about not expending it.
Okay.
In the June, we'll just carry it forward, I think that's.
Fine.
It was an unusual year for a variety of reasons, so, you know.
I know, that happens a lot.
Yep.
Uh, so that means we're gonna go out for bid?
I, 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 we've always, previously had bid the culverts, and I, I think that's the way to go. I, I'm a big believer in bids, even if it's under ten, but if it's close, I think sometimes you, you might find somebody up there that, you never know.
Well, I have, I have, there's some things I would bid, but there's a lot of things I don't care to bid, because I know how the bid process works. You know, when it comes down to work, I don't like bid processes unless you're gonna specify exactly what everybody's gonna do, and that's not gonna happen in dirt work, you know? You've got that latitude that, and they're gonna.
And I, and I agree, but there's some things.
Like culverts.
Culverts are culverts.
Yep.
I agree.
Well, there's different grades of culverts, just so you know.
Yep, I do.
Paul Smith said that pretty well, you never know what's on the job list.
So that's what I had, I just wanted to get that on hand, so that I could get going on it.
Yeah, well, while Mike's here, the one thing Vicki and I had discussed is, since we've put the electricity in the Madrid ground, uh, for, uh, GCA.
Yes.
Yes. Um.
For?
For.
Not GCA.
Uh, who is it?
For the snow power.
Well, that's my best guess.
He's not GCA.
No, he's separate, excuse me, I agree. Yes, I definitely misspoke.
Yep.
So now that the, what's his name, I'm trying.
You would ask me this?
Yeah, we're gonna look bad. Chase, the contractor.
Chase Water?
Yes.
Chase, Chase, yeah, yeah.
So we've been getting the.
Tyson Chase.
Tyson Chase, thank you, thank you. Um, so now that we've been getting the bill from Central Maine Power, Vicki, what's that been? You been seeing?
We just got one the other day, which was the largest one, and I think it was, was it one sixty, one sixty something?
So obviously, he's using electricity above and beyond what the paint for the street lights are pulling. I think for this year, my suggestion to Vicki and to the commissioners and to you, uh, will, why don't we just absorb the cost as the county? And then when we renew his contract next year, if he's going to renew, then we can build some type of cost into that, if you want to recoup that cost.
How much is it this year, so far?
It's a small amount, but.
Well, one of the things I had told him when we did this, when we plugged up the light, and, and he knows it, is I said that they will pay for the lighting, but they are not gonna pay for the additional power to plug in your, your bucket loader, your truck, and your camper, and all of that stuff. They're gonna have to give you a bill for the additional power, and you're supposed to pay.
And, but we can't figure out, we're gonna have to make a determination, how much is the street light, which you can't tell from your bill.
No, what I'm saying is, you could, you could do, you could do a, an average, you know what I mean? You could look at your average light bill that you was paying in November, because nothing's plugged in in November, you could look and see what it was. If you average light bill of sixty-five dollars, then you could say, well, it was a hundred and sixty, so a hundred is yours.
But we don't have that historical.
Yeah.
Uh, cost yet, so I think it's good to implement it next year when we renew the contract, or build the price rate into it.
But I want you to know that he knew that they would be a chance.
He's not gonna be blindsided.
No, he's not one of them. He knows this is coming.
He knows.
Okay, we're on the same page.
Yeah, we are.
That's good. Anymore, Mike?
No.
Sure?
Well, not today.
Yes, that's it.
Okay, we're still under miscellaneous, and I did just wanna mention that, um, that people should, in the court, should pay attention to the fact that we're going to have less money, because the town of Jay is gonna lose a tremendous amount of value when the paper mill gets reassessed, and it will be done. I, I did have a question about that, I mean, how much have they already been de-battled? Because I couldn't remember that when I was working there, it was a fight, I mean, they, they've been. They're out there pretty good already, right?
Yep.
I mean, I remember, like, I think, I think when I first started working there, they were paying like eight, eighty-two percent of Jay's.
Taxes.
Taxes, and it's nobody's near that now. So the question is, does anybody know what they have in value at currently? Or what they have valued at last year?
Well, I can, I can give you historical valuations from the state's perspective.
Yeah.
But when they, when they file, and I'm getting out here, because this is something, she probably just talked with Jay, but again, they fought for the hardship, uh, what's the designation they get from the state? And basically, my understanding is, that actually, there's, there's a valuation for educational purposes, and then there's a property tax valuation, and, and those are different numbers.
Yeah.
Um, but I can certainly give you historically what the state valuation for property taxes is.
Well, I would guess I'd say it's around three hundred and fifty million, and it'll probably drop well over a hundred million dollars. Again, from a.
And we could probably get a good idea if we go back and look at a eight-year history.
To get the little numbers.
Yep.
And then we could figure out, uh, what it costs per million dollars, some road, whatever, right, and county. Dollars per million of taxes.
Oh, yeah, I mean, that's easily done.
Yeah, that's what I meant. So you can see, if it drops a hundred million dollars, that's gonna be a big, significant drop for a Franklin County.
That's making the assumption that other communities haven't done revaluation, and they've gone up significantly.
So, like, when, when are they gonna evaluate, say, the, the farming with the, um, solar field?
Well, that, that's, I mean, that's a question for the town of Farmington, I'm assuming they're gonna pick up partial, April one is the deadline for taxation.
Yeah.
So they're gonna pick up a partial cost of what's been constructed prior to April one. You're not gonna see the big impact of that until that's built out.
Right.
Uh, which I think, what is that, two-year project, I don't know, with the product, the time.
Yeah, definitely.
So I mean, you know, when.
How much they were.
When you talk, talk taxes, you know, you get a community, like, let's just, out of the blue, use Rangeley, if they're due for a revaluation this year, or they did it last year, their valuation could go up significantly to help offset what Jay loses.
Was the investment.
So, you, you don't know until we see the numbers come out from the state.
And neither one of them will be for another year or two.
That is correct, this year, we will not see that impact on Jay this year, it will be in the upcoming year, you are correct. Because the state valuation, I have not seen it. Shouldn't come January.
People should be aware, they're willing to answer, significant tax.
Especially the town of Jay individually, but of course, it will impact the county as well.
Alright, so, we've covered miscellaneous, partners? Is there anything else? Yep?
No, sir.
Is Sue? No?
No.
Alright, so, we await a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Well, we need to do executive sessions.
Yeah, oh, excuse me, adjourn for the.
Excuse me, yeah, yeah.
Uh, can you just go into executive session, we can adjourn Julie.
Adjourn, so it's alright. We'll make, we gotta have a.
Yes, sir.
Four oh five six A.
What's that?
It's four, yeah, four oh five six A.
Okay.
Is that four oh five?
Let me see, I get this right, it's done, four oh five six A. Uh, pursuant to MRS A four oh five six A, I move that we go into executive session. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, I'll second that.
Well, yeah, go ahead. Terry?
Aye.
Lance?
Aye.
Clyde?
Aye.
Conference recording, stop.